Okay. Now you see me? Hello? Um, so. I think my plan essentially is to just do a practice midterm, which is one of each type of question, right? And I think that makes the most sense because we have, um, it's gonna be exactly like the test that we have. On Wednesday or whatever day, Wednesday? Forget what day, Wednesday, I think. Um, uh, so yeah, does that make sense? Is everybody good with that? I just try one of the practice midterms. Sounds good, so I will get the practice midterm from Ress because Ress has a bunch of practice midterms. Um, I don't know, I don't know which one I should do because I feel like people have already done some of them, so I probably like, my go-to would be like the first one. But people probably have already done that one, if everybody's already done that one, then you know. You know, but like, just, just from the chat, yeah. Twenty eighteen fall. It's this one. I don't mind which one I do. I, I does. Ress, Ress, here. Ress dot C A slash services slash academic. You go exam bank and they have an exam bank. And also, everybody, take a look here. Check out M T H three twelve, your boy. Uh, with the soon to be corrected last name spelling, which is currently incorrect, but that's okay. Uh, I will be doing a, uh, M T H three twelve session on November fourth. So, everybody be there, okay, anyways, uh, here's exam, exam bank. Also, of course, I want to mention that, you know, of course, you can find my notes here on my website, tutor dot C slash notes, I'll put that. In the chat quickly, although, of course, everybody has heard me say it before, so I will just put it here, I'll put it in, I don't know, discussion, looks like. We put it up, said anything in discussion, so there's a link and you can click. Electric networks, I will have this open because I need it open. While we're doing it, so, well, I, I need it open for body plots, that's what I need it open for. So, I have some memorization to do, I guess, before the exam, but. Um, yeah, that's the idea, so all the notes, the notes go up to, uh, and including body plots, that's, that's, it stops there. The body plot section is, is useful. So what does everybody think? Which exam, should I just, should I just do the twenty eighteen fall one? If a bunch, if like, if a few of you have done it, just tell me and then I can do a different one that less people have done, it doesn't really matter, I'll have a, I'll have E L E three O two chat open. I would think so too, right? Yeah, yeah, exactly, so, uh, maybe winter, twenty thirteen winter? This one here, just wanna make sure it's, it's good. V O in terms of V I, it's fine. And then a second order circuit question. Two second order circuit questions and then a body plot? Is it two separate second order circuit questions? Oh, no, 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 this is find the transfer function? Oh, okay, so it's not actually exactly the same as our test, that's okay, I can just find the transfer function and then graph the transfer function. Uh, is that the transfer function? Yeah, there's the transfer function, so we can do that, oh, that's kind of weird. Oh, it's a quadratic transfer function? No, it's not, what? J omega. Oh, it is, it is, it is a transfer. Okay, anyways. Um. Let's take a look at another one, see if this, twenty fourteen fall. This one's any better? Uh, it's a very simple one there, there, okay, this is a, this is a little bit more of a standard one, yeah, let's do twenty fourteen fall, I think that's good. So I think probably far enough that people haven't done it, and maybe we'll do another one of these after, because this is a relatively simple one. So, we can, we can do that, okay? So I will begin. Yeah, for sure. To check if the answer is right? Uh, yeah, that's a good, that's a good question. Um. Um. Yeah, we can't check our answer, that's true. Yeah. I think, yeah, that's true. I mean, I kind of, I. Yeah, that's, that, that is true, that we would like to be able to check our answers. Um, I'm fairly confident in it. So, I think. I think, I'm pretty, yeah, like, I'm pretty certain about my answers when I, when I do things like this. Unless they do something weird, determine the frequency domain relationship. Oh, no, this is actually kind of also a weird question, is this, is it gonna say plot? Uh, no, it's not. Not gonna say that, okay, no, no, it's not actually weird. Yeah, uh, I'm gonna go with it and then, yeah, check my answers, I mean, I'll compare with here and see what they lost marks on exactly, I guess, and that's what I'll. When I'll decide, but I think for most part, it'll be okay. For the most part, it'll be okay. So, okay, let's, let's begin here with, um, this, I should check in someone say something so I can check if the, your voices are in the recording? Uh, say one more time, sorry, didn't see it, it wasn't looking, oh, it's not, good thing, I, good thing, I, good thing I checked, okay, so, let me add that quickly, yeah. And one more time. There we go, okay, good, yes, okay, everybody's in the recording now, perfect. So, let's begin, let's begin here. Um, with an op-amp, uh, circuit, consider the circuit below, oh, it doesn't tell us what V S is. Um. Time domain, oh. Time domain relationship. Okay. Uh, bad, bad start, because this is not the kind of question we're gonna get on the thing, so they, it looks like they did change it slightly since, since twenty fourteen. So the reason I say that is because the first question says, determine the relationship between V O and V S, which is, which is possible for us to do. It's just that it's not the kind of, we're not gonna get a question like that, I'm fairly, just based on what the professor has said, we're gonna get an actual. Reading here, like, an actual value, so like, we don't have a value for V S in this question. It's just meant to like, we find an equation that relates V S and V O. Um, so let's take a look at another one and see if there's another one that's a, has a better question. Um, yeah, twenty fourteen fall, isn't that the one I was just doing? Is there two twenty fourteen fall ones? Maybe there's two twenty fourteen fall ones? Yeah, looks like there's two twenty fourteen fall ones. And this one, this one looks better. I think I already did this one, but that's okay. Sorry, I should, I should have checked and choose this, chose this before, but thinking maybe. I shouldn't choose it and then be certain about it, then people would say, oh, I didn't need that question. Uh, did I do this question here? Twenty fourteen fall. Um, if anyone has any suggestions, let me know. Figure it out. Okay, twenty thirteen fall? There's a second order circuit question. And no, that's not, okay, so twenty thirteen is too far back, because the questions are just entirely different. Twenty fourteen, so again, it looks like our best bet is twenty eighteen fall, because that's the one that's closest to our actual thing, what about twenty fourteen winter? That one looks okay, I did do this question. Oh, no, that's, I didn't do this question. Okay, I think this one's good, twenty fourteen winter E L E three O two winter. I think that's good. Let me see the answer for this, for the differential equation one. Yeah, okay, twenty fourteen winter, I think that's good. I'm good with that one. Hopefully, everybody's good with that one too. It is one that appears to be good for, in terms of like, how it relates to our, our exam. So I think that's, I think this is the best, so there you go, there's our A C S, again, twenty fourteen winter E L E three O two. T S is the one that it's called. It is one of them, that's there, okay? Let's start now, R one is twenty five kilo-ohms, uh, R two is fifteen kilo-ohms, C is zero point zero one microfarad, V one is that sinusoid. And assume initial voltage on the capacitor is, um, one hu, uh, zero volts, determine V O, so the, we, we can assume that there's, you know, an initial voltage difference here of zero. Um, so then, we can go, is it, is it being weird again? What we always do is essentially just say, these nodes have the same voltage, right, always, always, ideal op-amps, same voltage, zero amps, zero amps. Right, that's what we always, always say, and from that, we can solve the whole circuit. Same voltage, zero amps, zero amps. We're looking for V O, so what we're gonna have to do is do nodal at this node, right? And the way I always go about doing it is to say, well, if that's zero amps, then the current this way must be equal to the current this way. Right, alternatively, you can do nodal analysis as well, like, do a, like, a node voltages at this node, and that would work, you'd get the same equations. But I just say that this is equal to this. So, because what that gets me is, so the, the, I'll leave the left-hand side for a second, but this is, uh, I'll just call this, you know, zero, it's zero volts. Minus V O over R two, right, that's that current, zero minus V O over R two. And then this current, well, this current we gotta figure out, and so we do that by switching into the phaser domain, right, so I, first I gotta figure out what my V I is. So V I is equal to thirty-two sine seventy, that's it, but it needs to be a cosine. So always to switch sine into cosine, you do cosine seventy minus ninety. It's always what it is. So, it's always minus ninety. Something I forget all the time, and, and I, like, I can never remember, but I did this practice a few days ago with some people and then, and then, uh, it, I remembered from there, so. Unless I'm getting it wrong now and someone tell me, but I'm, I'm pretty sure it's minus ninety, that's, that, I'm pretty common about that. So as a phaser, that's thirty-two to an angle of negative ninety, with our omega equal to seven, right? So then switching everything into phaser domain. Resistance has stayed the same, but our capacitor turns into one over J omega C, right? Um, and so, we can, we can figure out what that is in a second. Um, so then I need this current, right, I'm trying to find that current. So what I have is two impedances in parallel, so I can turn that into a single impedance, right, so I'm gonna say here, we have like a equivalent. Impedance, I'll call it just Z, right, so the impedance is equal to, and then just two impedances in parallel, right? Is going to be one over, one over R one plus one over, uh, yeah. And then one over J, a lot of one overs, so one over. One over R one plus one over, one over J omega C, if we take the impedance there and the impedance there. And that's the total impedance this way, right? Um, and so, uh, we can just. Uh, calculate what that impedance is in total now. So it's gonna be still one over, so one over R one plus J omega C there, right? Then I just wanna multiply here by R one over R, uh, the different color, just so. People could keep track, so R one over R one, right? And then that's gonna be one over, one over R one. Uh, no, sorry, one over, one over, no, one plus. J omega C R one over R one, so that's equal to R one over one plus J omega C R. One, is there supposed to be an R two in there? No, there's not supposed to be an R two, there we go. So that's correct, that's the total impedance across, you know, across these parallel impedances. So now, should be clear, that, that, that's not equal to that, this is the equation I'm creating, so I'm just gonna note here. Just to be super clear, that's I two, that's I one, so I'm saying that I two equals I one. It's I one there, so I two is for sure that, right, that current, so if there's any questions about that, just let me know, right, but it's zero minus V O over R two. And now this current is gonna be V I. V I as a phaser, it's all phasers now, minus zero. Over the impedance, right, and that impedance is what we just calculated over here, R one, oh, R one over. One plus J omega C R one. Okay? And, I can just solve for V O now, right? That's the whole point, I can just use this equation to solve for V O. Being weird. You have to buy a new one. It screwed up the cord a little bit. So it does that strangely, see if I restart one note. Nope, doesn't fix it. It is a cord issue? Okay, well, we'll just have to live with it for a little bit. Doesn't really affect what I'm doing, but it's a little distracting, but anyways, I just have, just have to live with it. Uh, V I over, so R one over one plus, uh, J omega C R one. Equals negative V O over R two, so that to just figure out our, you know, figure out, uh. Our, our V O, I'll just go here, V O equals negative V I, or I'll say R two. Times V I. Over. R one over one plus J omega C R one. Right? And essentially, we, there we have it, so now, let's just plug everything in, so R two is fifteen kilo-ohms, R one is twenty-five, so it's gonna be. Um, minus, sorry, it was, R two is fifteen, R two is fifteen, yeah. So it's negative fifteen, uh, kilo, kilo, whatever. Um, times V I, okay, over, uh, the other one was twenty-five, so this is twenty-five, yeah. Um, you can write that number on the bottom here as, oh, no, can you write it as that, never mind? You can't write it as that. Zero plus. No, no, you can't write it as that, okay, so whatever, it's, it's gonna be, um, uh, twenty-five kilo-ohms over one plus. J omega is seven, C is zero point zero one times ten to the negative six, zero point zero one. Times ten to the negative six, and then R one is twenty-five times ten to the three. Times ten to the three, right, kilo-ohms on the bottom there, so I'll write times ten to the three here, too. Ten to the three, uh, and I guess I'll write this as times ten to the three as well, it's better to write it as just the right units. Yeah, and then, um, again, just keep plugging everything in, just keep working on it, so negative fifteen times ten to the three. I'll put V I in now too, so V I was thirty-two to an angle of negative ninety. Thirty-two to an angle of negative ninety. Over all this, okay, so you can think of this, right, this right here as plus zero J. Right, plus zero J, and then, um, I think my calculator is able to handle it, so I think I can just plug this into my calculator. Um. If I'm in complex mode, yes, I am, and then I just say. Twenty-five thousand. Over, oh, no, but I should work out what that denominator is, so, twenty-five thousand plus zero J. Over one plus, and now I'm just gonna work out what that is, there's seven times zero point zero zero one, sorry, not zero, zero, one, zero, one. Times twenty-five, times ten to the negative three. So I get, uh, I get one point seven five times ten to the negative three J. And so again, I can just plug that denominator into my calculator. Negative fifteen times ten to the three times thirty-two to an angle of negative ninety. And then I get, so, it's a fraction, twenty-five thousand over one plus answer I. So, I get twenty. Two thousand four, twenty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine minus forty-three point seventy-five J. Um, great? Uh, now, this one, I, I just do. I think I just, yeah, I just multiply the mag, this is the angle zero, add the thing, yeah, yeah, I just multiply the magnitudes. So this is now negative, so it's gonna be fifteen times thirty-two times ten to the three. Oops, times ten to the three. So this is, um, negative forty-eight. Thousand to an angle of negative ninety. Over twenty-four nine 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 minus forty-three point seventy-five J. Um, and then I can either turn this into polar or turn this into standard form, it does it, or rectangular form, whatever. Um, it doesn't really matter, I guess I could turn this into rectangular form, it's not that bad, since our angle is negative ninety, right, you see our, our angle is negative ninety. But then our magnitude is also negative, so what you can think of, what's happening here is that we have a complex number, right? Rotated by negative ninety degrees, but then its magnitude itself is, is negative, so that means it's pointing in the opposite direction of what it should. So there is our, that is what this represents, okay? With a magnitude here of four thou, forty, four hundred and eighty thousand. Okay, so that numerator is actually just for. This, right, you can think of it as like negative that, right, negative that, so the negative doesn't apply in. Um, so it's just J hat, right, because push straight up is just the J, J hat axis. So we have that, so, uh, two four nine 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 minus forty-three point seventy-five J. And again, this is just something my calculator is able to. To, just have to check my phone quickly. Okay. Okay, okay. So, uh, let me have, uh, Discord open as well, sorry, should have Discord open. Um. See here. Someone just messaged me, uh. Okay, so, continuing on, something I can plug into my calculator. Uh, four hundred and eighty thousand I. Two four nine 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 minus forty-three point seventy-five I. And I get the answer here of negative zero point zero three three six plus nineteen point two I. And. Zero point zero three six. Um, yeah, as a complex number, they have it.
Quick question?
Yeah.
You know the V O formulas for all the different amplifiers, do they apply here? Can we use them here?
Um. Oh, yeah, I see what you mean. Uh, yeah, probably. I mean, I don't know if there's an exact. Um, so find, um, and those of elect E L E.
Cause I used it to do this one when I was doing it again.
Yeah, and did it work?
And it worked, yeah, it worked, but I'm not sure if, does it work for like all situations or.
I don't think it would, I don't think it would work for all situations, but yeah, which one did you match it to, what kind of amplifier?
Oh, it's inverting.
The inverting amplifier, yeah, so if you look at the inverting amplifier here, it's a situation like, like this, so. The voltage is being applied to the inverting thing, but you have a negative feedback, so yeah, exactly the situation. And then the formula for it is that V O is negative R F, R F is that, over, over R one, and R one is that, and that probably exactly does work, yeah. I mean, it's gonna be, yeah, yeah, that is exactly what we did, because you see the, the V O.
Yeah, damn.
We have it here, here. V O is equal to R two, I just called that R two, R F, over this, which is that impedance right there, I have a negative in there for some reason, is that supposed to be there? Oh, it is supposed to be there, negative is supposed to be there. So, yeah, exactly, yep, this is a negative inverting, uh, this is an inverting op-amp, and so the formula we got at the end here is the inverting op-amp situation. Um, I wouldn't rely on that, I guess, just because it might be more confusing, but, like, it's better to know why the formulas get there, but yeah, that's, that is, that is true, and that did work, so yeah. Good point. Um, I'm just gonna convert this quickly to, uh, uh, back into time domain, right? So it's gonna have a magnitude of zero point zero three three six squared plus nineteen point two squared to an angle of tan inverse of nineteen point two over negative, well. Complex, okay, negative zero point zero three three six, but that's a little, it's a little bit of complication there. Um, but anyways, I can get the magnitude, so the magnitude is nineteen point two. Cosine seventy plus, and now, plus something, so. The way I do this is I just visualize this vector, right, this vector is, it's a negative X component but positive J hat, so it's over there. And then I use my Cass rule. Um, so it'll look like this, and I say, okay, well, you know, um. Tan is negative here, right, so if I, if I just, if I just take the, um, tan inverse of, of this, right, of just the positive one. It'll give me the angle in the first quadrant for this value, so if I just, again, just, just the positive one for a second here, right? So if I just take tan inverse of the, the positive version of that, nineteen point two over zero point zero three three six. I get eighty-nine point nine degrees, which is something like right there, but I gotta move that to this quadrant, right? So it's gonna, I just have to do, uh, one eighty minus that, right, so it's gonna be one eighty minus the angle I got here, which was eighty-nine point eighty-nine degrees. So eighty-nine point eighty-nine degrees, right, and this is gonna be ninety-one point eleven, is that what it is? Ninety-one point, no, ninety point one, I don't know what I'm talking about, ninety point one. Degrees. And there we go, ninety point. Cause again, one eighty minus that angle, so there we go. Okay, um, and then. Their answer is just weird. Not in time domain. Um, I guess they didn't even say to do it in time domain, but I guess, the question doesn't prompt you to put it in time domain, sorry, their question is in time domain, but. It's written as a cosine and a sine term, which is a little strange. They did it entirely, yeah, they did it entirely in time domain, they did not convert to phasers. And so their answer is not a single cosine, it's a cosine and a sine. Um, but let's graph our answers and see if it's the same, I guess, just try that, I feel like it won't be that, so, let's see how that could be the same. So I guess this is the situation we're running. As mentioned before, seven X plus ninety point one, and it's gonna be in degrees, there we go. Um, and then, uh, I need the other answer, the answer from the actual thing, it's negative zero point zero three three six. Cosine. Seven X minus nineteen point two nine. Seven X, and yes, it's the same graph, okay, then, there we go, doesn't matter then, same answer. You see, it's the same, same. So, good, happy that that actually worked. So any questions about this, any questions about this whole process for the A C op-amp? We'll have a question similar to this.
Do you scroll down?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, stop right there.
Yeah.
Uh, how did you go from? So the equate, uh, the expression with, where the denominator is twenty-five thousand plus zero J hat divided by that? How did you go from that to the next line, which has twenty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine minus forty-three point seven five J hat?
Uh, this I can do because my calc, I can just plug that into my calculator, and I get this.
Oh.
That's how I do it, I'm, there's no trick to it, if you do it by hand, convert this to polar form and polar form, it's a lot easier to do it like that.
Okay.
Right? Um, so yeah, that's, that's how I would do it essentially. And then in polar form, you know, you just take the ratio of the two magnitudes and subtract the angles. And then you'd get this, but I like to do things in rectangular form, it makes a little bit more sense to me, but yeah.
Good.
No problem, no problem, any other questions about this one? Otherwise, I'll move on to the. Differential equation one. Okay, uh, I should have the chat open too, sorry, someone seeing the chat, okay, I have my, I have my, um, I have E L E three O two open. Okay. Then time to move on to the second order circuit. Which was the last question on this exam for some reason. Uh, and we'll do it in the, in the order of the questions that they give us there. Right? So it's question three, but it's not question three, it's question two. So there is our second order circuit, I'm gonna note that the, um, inductor and the capacitor are in parallel. So what that means is we're gonna be doing node, nodal analysis to figure out what this, um. Differential equation is, but that's just a note, you know, if it's in parallel, we're gonna do nodal, if it was in series, we'd do K B L. Um, so the first question is, write a differential equation in terms of V. Uh, V is where, there's V, V is there, okay, so the voltage across the capacitor, essentially, is the best way to think about this, right, the voltage across the capacitor is our V of T. V of T. Also, at time equals zero, this is closing, until then, there is no current through here, right, no zero amps of current. Right, so since there's zero amps of current through there, that means the voltage drop by the resistor is, uh, zero, right? So this may as well not be there either, and then the voltage source is providing a voltage difference between nothing and that, so I'm, I'm. Uh, occasionally, I get for some reason confused that we don't know the voltage here. But anyways, there's zero amps going through there, sorry? A short circuit, it's a short circuit, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm saying T is less than zero.
Oh, okay.
T less than zero, right, this is a short circuit until then, but then at zero, it closes. Um, but, okay, we'll deal with that in a sec. So, first of all, for the differential equation, we have to draw the circuit at T is, um, greater than zero. T is greater than zero. So the circuit then would look like this, it's gonna be plus eight volts, okay, then we have a thing like that. And a thing like that, and then a thing like that, and now a little connection like that, two volts. Two volts, okay, then we have our inductor. And then we have our capacitor. Okay, again, that is our V of T that we're solving, okay, I know all the values here, whatever. Cause it's, uh, it's L and that's H, oops. That's R one. And that's R two, except they're the same, they're the same resistances, so it doesn't even matter, I'll just call it R, it's the same resistance. Okay, so now to set up a nodal question about this, right? Um, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do, sorry, to set up a differential equation, I'm going to do, um, nodal at this node, and we'll see how it goes. This is what I'll leave my notes open for. Um, cause I always forget. Just scrolling my notes for a second here. Okay. So I will choose this node, this is our ground node, I should note here too, so I'm gonna choose this node like that. Right, that's our, that's the node we're gonna be dealing with, and then so from here, I'm just gonna do standard nodal analysis, so. Current's leaving, so that's V. Right, minus eight over, uh, R. I'll just say it right away, over two, right? Um, plus, and now the volt, the current leaving here, two, right? Um, the current leaving here is V minus two over R or over two. Okay, now the current through an inductor, okay, the current through an inductor. Um, is equal to, well, I'm gonna use this equation, that the voltage through an inductor. Across an inductor is equal to L D I D T, where I is the current through the inductor, so I'm gonna just rearrange this. Right, by integrating, right? To get I. Uh, equals. Um, I, I just rearranged the formula there, so now the current leaving is one over L integral. Zero to T, V L D tau. Um, and now the current through a capacitor is equal to C D V D T. And the, the, I should note here that V L is V, right? So technically it's V L here, but V L, the voltage across the inductor, is V, the V we're looking for, so I can just write everything in terms of V, it's fine. Okay. So I let.
Sorry, Adam, I.
Equals zero, yeah.
I just wanted to ask, so if you have a chance, could you just go back, I just didn't see the final solution for your.
For the last one here?
Uh, first question. Okay, so seventeen plus. Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, okay. Okay, so, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I was just gonna say, so, so D V by D T, that V also is referring to the same V, right?
Yes, that is, yeah, because of.
Because it's all in parallel?
It's directly, well, this one's, you're like literally directly the one that we're talking about, the voltage.
Yeah.
Right?
And so is V across the, uh, the, the inductor because they're in parallel, is that why?
Yeah, because they're in parallel, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That's good, good. Um. Uh, yeah, okay, so then here, we have our differential equation, but it doesn't look right, so I'm going to just rearrange it a little bit. So it's V over two plus V over two minus four minus one. Plus one over L integral zero to T, V D tau plus C D V D T. And it's important that you make sure all your Vs are the correct Vs, right? You can't just put whatever V you want, right? If this was V L and V L wasn't equal to V, then you couldn't just replace it, you have to make sure, but. Situations will be like that, um, it'll, it'll happen nicely if you do nodal for parallel or, yeah, K V L for series. Then it'll work. Anyways, this is just V minus five plus one over L. Uh, integral zero to T of V D tau. Um, plus C D V D T equals zero. And now take the derivative of both sides, right, so D V D T. Um, plus, um, one over L V plus C D squared V by D T squared equals zero. And I can just rewrite this as D squared V by D T squared. Uh, plus, uh, one over L, one over C. D V D T plus one over L C V equals zero. Right, I just divided everything by C there.
Okay, sorry to interrupt.
Of course, go ahead.
The first line at the top, whatever happened to the, uh, denominator two over your, oh, stop, stop. So you'll see in the bottom line right there.
Here, like the, these guys?
Uh, yeah, when you go from there to V minus five plus one over L integral of V. Uh, yeah, at there. What happened to the two?
Yeah, so here, V over, V over two, V over two, V over two, V over two. Negative eight over two is negative four, negative two over two is negative.
Never, never mind, I had a brain fart.
Don't worry about it, all good, there you go, questions answered?
Yeah, sorry, sorry.
No problem at all, sounds good. Okay, so, um, at this point is when I put the numbers in, right? So we, we do know the numbers, so, uh, one over C, so C is the capacitance. One over C is one over one, which is just one, right, so I'll just rewrite this as D squared V over D T squared plus D V D T. And then L C is gonna be two times one, so it's gonna be one third, plus one third V equals zero. Uh, and is what else the question asks, write a differential equation, that's all it asked, write a differential equation, oh, it said one. Sorry, we're multiplying, not adding, two times one is not three, two times one is two. That is the answer for the first section, part A is just says, write the differential equation. Okay, part B is, um. Solve it. Um, which is fine. Um. Looks like they lost marks here for this test, this test didn't actually do that well. I don't see the grade, but, um. Uh, considering, considering. It says one mark for effort on two questions, two questions? No, three questions, the, the last three questions, like the last three sections of this question says mark for effort. I don't think it's doing too well, but, uh, it's okay, anyways, let's, let's just keep going. Um, so. Yeah, I don't know, uh, anyways, solving this differential equation, you just got to do, you just have to do the, um, the whole, you know, M. Uh, M squared plus M plus one half equals zero. M is equal, M one, two is equal to, so negative B plus or minus the square root of B squared minus. Four A C all over two A, so over two. So that's negative one half plus or minus the square root of negative one over two. Right, one minus two is one. One, so this is negative one over two plus or minus, uh, one over two J. Okay, and then, um. So for some reason, on this part, it's labeled minus two marks, which is a little bit. Weird, unless they mean two marks, like you're getting two marks for this, I can't tell if that's what they mean.
I think it's, I, I think the, the way they've broken it down, because this looks to me like it's actually like the, the answer, the answer guide. Because they had it the same setup first, so they give you one mark for effort and then, yeah.
Oh, okay, so it's not like they got one mark for effort because they, but the rest of it's wrong, no, okay, so yeah. Yeah, I see, okay, so this, this is probably the answer sheet, and so you just say two marks for this step, and then one mark for effort. That's what they're saying, okay, makes sense, yeah, that makes sense. So that's the answer then, and then that means that our natural solution, uh, V of T is equal to. End of T, or, or V, I usually call it V T of T, V transient of T is equal to, now it's E to the negative one half T. Times A cosine, uh, one half. Yeah, co, goes out one half T plus B sine one half T. Uh, there, that is our. Solution. So now to solve this, actually, we need to find initial conditions and, um. Find B of T, and then it, it does make you start at infinity, right? Uh, uh, initial conditions, so now that's, that's our whole next section here, initial. Initial, uh, conditions. Which are usually, uh, the tricky part of doing this, cause this is all just sort of set up a differential equation. And then write it, um, so let me just copy the picture down here so we can see it, so to find the initial conditions, right? The initial conditions we want are V of zero plus and V prime of zero plus, that's our goal, right? Um, so V of zero plus is equal to V of zero minus, and that's thanks to the capacitor, right? Um, so V of zero minus, well, we can find that using, uh, just drawing the circuit at T equals zero minus, so right before the switch closed. So it would look like this, then, we're in the steady state response. Right, so nothing here, doesn't matter, short circuit and then open circuit. Right, that's what this would look like. Right, so the inductor is a short circuit, capacitor is a open circuit, this just doesn't exist because it's just, it's just a short circuit, so it doesn't matter. Right? Um, which is fine, and then we have here now that I wanna find this voltage, right? That's our V of, V of zero minus, right, well, it's the same node, so it equals zero, right, that, that's the same note. So it's like saying, what's the voltage difference between here and here? Zero, ideally. Right, so zero volts for our initial condition there. Um, so just to be clear, that, that equals V of zero plus because it's a capacitor. And then some other thing that's useful to note is, is just that I know in the next step, I'm gonna need this current. Okay, to help solve the problem, this current, because that's the current through the inductor. At zero minus, and so that's also the current through the inductor, so I'll say I L at zero plus, right? Um, and that, it's useful because I'm gonna have to, to find this value, I'm gonna need to draw the circuit zero plus, so I wanna have as much information as possible, so it's good to go do that right away. So what's that current? Well, it's just, um, it's just the current through the inductor, uh, through the resistor here, so I equals V over R, right? So V is eight volts. And R is two, so it's two amps, okay, so that, that whole current is two amps. So when I draw now the circuit at T equals zero plus, because I'm trying to find V prime of zero plus. It's gonna look like this, right, it's gonna be plus minus eight volts. Right, uh, resistor, I'm sorry, my mouse is doing this, it does that sometimes. Um, I really gotta fix it, I just never do it, never fix it. Um. Voltage source like that, then we have our inductor. Then we have our capacitor, but I know a few things here, right, so, so what I'm, sorry, just to be fair, what I'm trying to find is the derivative of the voltage difference. What I do know is that that voltage is zero, right? It's zero, and I also know that this current is two amps. Okay? And so we gotta use the equation, you know, what has the derivative of the, what has the derivative of the voltage in it? Well, it's the current through a capacitor is equal to C times the rate of change of the voltage across that capacitor by D T. And so I can just rearrange that for C. I mean, for D V D T, that's what I mean. And now, uh, we're at zero plus, right? Right? We're looking for it at zero plus, well, we gotta find this at zero plus, what's the current? What is this current essentially, is what I'm looking for? Right? Okay, um, and so, um. To do that, there's lots of things we can do, let's see, is there just, I always look if there's some way I can just like work it out without having to think about it. Um, what can I do? Let me see for a second, usually there's some sort of current division that I can do, or. So I know that I can do no K C L at this node, so this current is equal to this current plus this current plus this current. Just fine, I guess. Um. Or this current plus this current is equal to that current, but I don't know if I can figure that out immediately. So the voltage difference across there is fine. Um, yeah, I gotta figure this out, what was it? Not that much of times. Um, okay, so I'll try just doing nodal, but how will that help me? I can't do nodal because I don't know the, oh, and I do know the voltage across here. So I can find the.
The, the markers did, um, K C L at node B, that's how they figured it out. Uh, like node V, like the, yeah, yeah, exactly.
Uh, okay, I'll try. Um, so. Okay. So the current leaving, so the voltage is zero there, right, so the current leaving is. Um, over the resistor is gonna be zero minus eight over two. Plus zero minus, uh, that thing there is, uh, two volt. Zero minus two over two plus two plus, okay, that makes sense, plus whatever that current is equals zero.
Are you using two amps, isn't it supposed to be four amps? Through the nook?
Yeah, you're right, I can't divide things, yep, you're right. Eight divided by two is not two. Why did I say that, I don't know why I said that, okay, yeah, it is supposed to be four. Yeah, four amps, um, uh, so there's four there, I'll just leave it like that, so it's a four there. Great, and now I can just do this, so it's negative four minus one plus four plus I equals zero. So I equals one amp. Right, I equals one. Great, um, so I can just plug that into this equation there, whoa, let's make that arrow a little bit better. Plug that into there, so it's one over, one over C times one amp equals D V D T, the D V D T that I'm looking for. And then C, C is just our capacitance, right, which is one, that was one over one. So one volt per second is equal to D V D T of zero plus. So there we go, we figured out our another initial condition, which I went too far on. There it is. So this is equal to one volt, volt, volt per second, there. Okay, and with this, I can now plug in my. Uh, plug into my formula these values, so I know that at zero, it's equal to zero, just the actual function, it's gonna be one A. And then that's zero, so A equals zero, great, that's everything there. Then I need to find the derivative, right, so V prime is equal to the derivative of the first one. Right, times the second one. B sine one half T, and then plus the first one. Times the derivative of the second one, which is one half, negative one half A sine one half T. Um, plus one half B cosine one half T. There, there's our derivative, and I know that it is equal to one, right, at zero. One note's being so weird, sorry about that. I don't know what's causing it, I'm gonna open task manager. See if there's anything going on. Not really, no, a lot of memory is being used by Discord for some reason, don't know why. Weird, but. I don't know, okay, I'll just continue. Um. Zero is equal to one, so one equals, that's gonna be negative one half A times one. Plus B times zero, right? Plus one, uh, close bracket. Plus one times negative one half A times zero. Plus one half B times one. So obviously some stuff cancels here, that all cancel, I mean, goes away, and the, the times one goes away. So it's one equals negative one half A plus one half B. A is equal to zero, right, A is equal to zero, so it's one, uh, one equals one half B, right, so B equals two. And so our final solution, well, not quite our final solution, but our final solution for the transient response is, um. So the transient is, um. Uh, so E to the negative one half T. Times two sine one half T. Let's check if that makes sense. Two sine one half, yep. Um, and then that's the, that, that is the final answer in the solutions, but technically, it's not quite there, you just have to check. So the actual solution for V of T is equal to the transient, always is equal to the transient spawn, response plus the steady state response. Right, which is equal to V of infinity. Right, V, well, V of infinity, and so we just draw the circuit at T goes to infinity. Right, so what does the circuit look like at T goes to infinity, well, it's, it's almost the same thing as this. It's almost the same thing as this, but, um, you just replace this with the, replace this with the short circuit, and then replace this with an open circuit. Right, we don't know any of these values, but then we just ask again, what's this voltage difference, and that's equal to zero. So technically, our final answer is, uh, since, since that's zero, right, it is just the transient. Right, so our actual final answer is two E to the negative one half T sine one half T. Okay, how does everybody feel about this one? Let me know. Yeah, so solve for final condition, yeah, Font just asked that, don't have to solve for final conditions, yeah, I'm just gonna do that last. It usually ends up being zero, but if it doesn't, then it does change. It usually ends up being zero, but if it doesn't, then it does change the answer, you do have to add something there. But usually it does just end up being zero. Okay, so any questions about this?
Oh, V equals two E to the power of negative one half t sine one half t, that's the final, final answer.
Yep, final, final answer.
Okay.
Yep. I'll wait a second, if there's any more questions. Otherwise I will start the Bodhi plot. What if the question was asking for current? Um, yeah, if it was asking for current. Did you make us, make us, yeah. Probably, like, if it was asking for like that current there. I feel like I'd probably still solve for voltage and then just use the formula, like, use the formula IC. IC equals CDVdt. Right, the current through a, well, current, uh, the current through the inductor, similar. I would still solve for V because same voltage. And then I, in that case, you know, V is equal to, well, I is equal to one over L integral zero to T V d tau, right? And so I'd still solve for the voltage. Whenever it's, whenever it's in parallel, it's much easier to solve for the voltage, so I would just go for that. There probably is a way to go right for the current, but I seem to screw that up. So I think it's just parallel, solve for voltage and then figure it out after. Yeah, you would solve for the same voltage that we just found and then substitute into this equation. If it's asking for, yeah, this is for the inductor, the current through the inductor. And then if it was current through the capacitor, you'd just use the other equation. And current through the resistor, it, I equals V over R. Well, but that's a little different, I guess, but... Yeah. That's in general how I, how I would do it. Yeah, and for series, I think series, yeah, you would solve for the current, it's easier to solve for the current because you're doing KVL across it. Right, and then, uh, yeah, because here we're using the currents to make an equation about the voltages. In series, you're using the voltages to make an equation about the currents. And so it's easier to use currents in series and it's easier to use voltages in parallel. So, yeah, that is that. Yep. Just got the picture for the Bodhi plot, just get the question up, I will answer your question in one second. Our question is to... Huh, I'm gonna seize. Maybe I won't.
Adam, I, I got a question, um, about this.
Yeah.
Uh, the part where you have to, uh, write a differential equation in terms of V of V.
Yeah.
So my initial inclination was just to do a nodal, right? Um, at V of V. And you see how they assume that, you know, the current was always leaving?
Yeah.
So when I was trying to, yeah, good, so when we're trying to find our voltage, uh, it would be the opposing node. Subtracted by the, the reference node, like the node that we're referring to, which is V of T. And then divided by the resistance that's across from it. So like, for example, if we refer to, uh, the eight volt node. Or so we're referring to V of T and we're trying to find the current going across that resistor. It would be eight minus V of T. Uh, over, uh, over R, which is two in this case. So that's the way I would go about it and I would just keep on adding them as long as I was consistent with everything else. Um, but when I followed through with that, I realized that my sign for my inductor and my capacitor were wrong. They had to be flipped.
Yeah.
So what, what do you think that I should notice when I'm doing the way that I'm doing?
So first of all, the way you're doing it is you're saying the, you're doing, you're calculating the current that way. So you're doing it a little bit backwards. So you're saying, if you do, how you usually do it is you say this voltage minus this voltage over the resistance. So that's why I did V minus eight over the resistance, but it's actually okay how you're doing it, as long as you, you're just assuming the inverse is true and that's fine. It is, it is fine, but what you have to remember is that this equation for the inductor is using passive sign convention. It's assuming the current's going like that, because the voltage is going like that, right? Same thing for the capacitor, it's using passive sign convention. So if you're gonna oppose that, you just have to switch the sign.
Okay, I was gonna say, that's why my, my signs were a bit...
For, for these two in particular, for the resistor, it's okay, right? It's, it's fine, right?
Okay.
But because you're using these equations with the derivatives and stuff like that, that assumes passive sign.
Okay, then, all right, thank you.
Again, and then Fawn also asked, uh, for this one, uh, are you not supposed to sub in C dvdt for I? Well, it asked me to find V. That's what it asked me to find. So I didn't have to do any of it. It asked me to find V, not any of the currents. If that makes sense, so no, I didn't, I didn't have to do that. I just solved for V directly. If it asks me for the currents, then yes, I'd have to substitute into one of these equations. Okay, Bodhi plot time. Essentially just gonna put the question up there and then we'll do it from here. So I'll say, this is our Bodhi plot. So...
This is the question he did during his review.
Oh, he did this one? Okay, then let's do a different one. Let's do it, just, let's do a different Bodhi plot. Doesn't matter which one. Um. Thanks for telling.
Can we try the quadratic one?
Uh, we can try the quadratic one, but I am fairly certain, very certain, we will not have it.
I've, I've gone through a lot of the older mid, uh, midterms, I've never seen them give you a quadratic.
And he was super like hush about the quadratic ones. He was like, yeah, oh, you're expected to know it, but don't worry about it. Like, he didn't outright say there was no quadratic one in the midterm, but I highly, highly doubt there will be a quadratic one in the midterm.
I mean, even, even though there is one, it's actually just, uh, it's actually the slope is just, uh, eighty, uh... Eighty decibels per decade with, uh, with a a hundred and eighty degrees per decade slope. And it's really similar to simple poles, simple zeros.
Yep, exactly, so it's not a big deal. Um, and also none of the practice midterms have it, so yeah, that's, I think it's, it's really just best to just spend your time learning the non, the non-quadratic ones.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, uh, most likely, uh, quadratics won't be on the midterm, because how history goes.
Exactly. Okay, so let's do this Bodhi plot. So first of all. Um, it's not in standard form, because you need these numbers to be one there, right? So we gotta force it to be one. So I'll just rewrite this as twenty-five J omega. Okay, J omega over zero point three, right? Plus one. Sorry, I'm gonna sneeze, one second. No, now that I say that, I'm not gonna, okay. We'll, we'll see what happens. Um, it's a little wild tonight. J omega over four, plus one, there we go. And now we're in standard form, because all of our pole, simple poles and simple zeros, or I said, I showed it backwards, simple poles and simple zeros. Are in standard form because we have over the number and then plus one on the outside. So we can still start plotting, let's, I like to make a list first, right? So a list of factors, right? So we have constant gain of twenty-five. We have a, uh, zero at origin. We have a pole, no, I'll say a simple zero with Z equal to zero point three, three point three. And we have a simple pole with P equal to four.
Wait, I have a question?
Yeah.
Um, actually, like, I would like to, like, uh, make sure that, like, what I think is right. Um, you have to factor out the zero point three and then multiply that by the twenty-five, no?
Oh, yeah, you're right. You're right, yeah, 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 stupid mistake on that point there, yep. Good thing you mentioned it, yeah, so I, I can't just divide, um, I did factor, so yeah, you're right. Zero point three is on the outside here and four is on the outside there, yeah. Very good point. Um, so now I just gotta multiply, so it's gonna be twenty-five times zero point three over four, that's fifteen over eight. For whatever reason. I mean, not for whatever reason, but that, that's what it is. So, sorry, times twenty-five. And so then that's just going to be fifteen over eight. J omega, J omega over zero point three plus one. And then J omega over four plus one, yep, very good, okay. So all that changes is that this is now fifteen over eight. Constant gain of that in our magnitude plot, that's fine, that'll, that won't change it. Okay, good. So now I like to just, you know, the question... Okay, well, in the actual midterm, it does give you a plot, an actual plot for each one. So I would, if I was just doing a practice question, I would just sketch these, right? Just say, okay, constant gain means you have, you know, your constant gain and then your, your, uh, phase of zero. But instead of doing that, since it's actually giving us the thing, I will actually do each one individually. Um, and by individually, I mean like, I'll actually make the magnitude plot and then make the phase plot. So, uh, let's do that here, for this is for the constant gain. So this is constant, I'll just number them. One, two, three, four, one. Two. Obviously ignore the sirens for a moment here. Hear the sirens, I don't know if you do. Two. And... Three. And... And then... Final. Each of, oh my god. Okay. So let's go ahead and do it. When I do this, I like to just put a little pot, uh, pot, a little plot, point at the origin, right? Which is at one, zero, or is, yeah, one, zero. And now we plot our constant gain, so the constant gain, remember, is, is, it's not gonna be fifteen over eight here, it's gonna be, it's gonna be twenty. Log ten of fifteen over eight. Right, and so twenty log ten of fifteen over eight is whatever. Twenty log ten of fifteen over eight is five point forty-six. Five point forty-six. Strange that that, did I factor right here? I don't think I did, factor zero point three, factor out four, twenty-five times, kinda check that, twenty-five times zero point three is fifteen over two, fifteen over... Yeah, fifteen over eight is, um, that's fine. Twenty log ten of the answer, whoops. The answer fifty, fifty-six, five point six forty-six, yep, okay, that's fine, I guess, whatever. Um, so our magnitude is always gonna be that, so it's gonna be, you know, around there, right? That's approximately where our thing is gonna be. So there we go, we have that. Is this gonna be really annoying? Yes, it is, okay, I have to... So this never works for me properly, because it's snapping to a grid. And then if I just shake it, it stops snapping to the grid, but that never works reliably. It just starts snapping to a grid again and then I can't do it. I just shake it a little bit and then just tell it to do it, there we go, okay. There's our magnitude plot. And just notably, that is at five point forty-six. And then our phase plot is, uh, you know, just one, zero, like to draw the dot. And then our phase, well, it's just a number, right? So the number is always just have a phase of zero. And so numbers have a phase of zero. Great, okay, there's that. That's it. Zero at origin, great. So a zero at origin looks like this, now I'm gonna be referring to my notes, just to make sure I don't make any mistakes, right? So zero at, uh, I have all this here, so zero at origin is, is this and it looks like that, there's our magnitude phase plots. It's good to have on hand here. So, um, yeah, and I just like to draw a little dot at the origin. So all it is, is it starts at the zero, it's a, you know, it's a zero at origin, it goes through here and then it, every decade it goes up by ten, right? Sorry, it goes up by twenty. So in a decade, we should go up by twenty, in a decade, we should go up by twenty, and decade, we should go up by twenty and same the other way. So there is our magnitude plot. Looks like that. And I really don't like straight line two and one note. There we go, okay. There's our magnitude plot and it's always, always good to label your, uh, slopes. So it's twenty decibels per decade, okay? Always label your slopes because, uh, it's for marks and also very useful to label your slopes. Because you need that information later on. Next one, our phase, since it's J omega, the phase is always ninety, it's always a complex number, right? So, uh, we can just plot that here. There's that, there's that. I just, can I get it? There we go. Okay, phase is always ninety, that's all there is to it, yes. Okay, next ones are a little bit more complicated, so we have a simple zero, a simple zero at Z equals zero point three. So the magnitude plot for this looks like this. Our, our function is zero. So our, our linear approximation is zero up until Z, so I'm gonna say Z equals zero point three, right? Z equals zero point three, so up until Z, so one, uh, so I went too far. Um... So zero point three is, this is zero point one, zero point two, zero point three, so that's zero point three. So we have a line, a flat line of zero until then, and then here we have a breaking point, a turning point or whatever. I'm gonna call it, so I like to just label them here, right? So there's our turning point, and so then from here on, it has a slope of twenty decibels per decade. Yeah, twenty decibels. So when I'm at three, because this is zero point three. Right, when I'm at three, which is right here, I should be up by a decade, uh, bu- up by twenty decibels, right? So I should be here now, right? And then when I'm up by three, uh, I'm at thirty, I should be up by twenty decibels, three hundred, I should be up by twenty decibels. So we have approximately a slope like that, right? And so that slope connects this point with, whatever, here, that looks pretty good. So, okay, but that's fine, that's, that's a good enough. And that slope is twenty, twenty decibels per decade. Now, um, the magnitude, the phase plot is kind of similar. So we have again, nothing until zero point one Z one, right? So what's zero point one of zero point three, right? Well, that's zero point zero three, right? So where's zero point zero three? That's zero point zero two, zero point zero three, that's right here. Okay, so we have zero until then. Then from then on, it's a slope of forty-five decibels per decade, right? So when I'm at, so again, here I'm gonna have a, a breaking point, right? So I'll, I'll do it in, okay, I'm not gonna label that because that's not a breaking point, so I'll only label the breaking points here, right? Um, I have, uh, yeah, forty-five decibels for decade, so then I'm at zero point zero three. So now when I'm at zero point three, two, I should be up by twenty, by forty-five decibels, right? So it's going to be right there. That's my next point. Right, so over, right, there you go. Then when I'm at two, three, I should be up by another forty-five decibel, so it should be a ninety, right? And the thing to always note here is that at your Z, at zero point three, you'll have forty-five degrees, but that's not, doesn't matter too much. And then now that you have these three points, from then on, it'll be zero again. So these three points are important, right? By three, I mean the start, middle, end. But really start, start and end, I guess, are the most important, but the middle, I guess actually the middle does matter, so... Okay. And then again here, I'll go like that. So annoying, that doesn't... Does anybody know if there's a way to stop the line tool from snapping to the grid? This time I'm gonna sneeze, this time I'm gonna sneeze. No, when I go, reach for the mute button, it's, I stop, it's happening. I'm sorry, holding shift? Uh, still shift, still snaps a little bit, looks like.
Control, alt.
Alt, if I just wiggle it, it stops doing, yeah, here, okay, so snapping, control, no, alt, oh, alt, oh, alt maybe? Yeah, it looks like alt's the button. It's a little laggy for some reason, okay, I will do that now. Great, I, of course, I, I could have just Googled this, but you are better than Google, thank you. For sharing, um, so, yeah, there's this. Perfect, okay, I can do it now properly, great. Um, anyways, there is our phase plot, so I'm just gonna label our breaking points again, so it's good to just label it when it's not on a nice number. So this is zero point zero three, this is at, uh, three. And in this middle bit, we have a slope of forty-five decibels per decade. Next plot. The last one is a simple pole, P equals four, so P equals four, it's good to label. Um, so a simple pole is essentially just the flipped over version of what we have there. So, we have zero until the pole, which is at four, so where's four? Four is, is one, two, three, four, so there's the pole, right? And we have zero until then. Right? So, um, zero until then. Um, and then from then on, it's negative twenty decibels per decade, so at forty, twenty, thirty, forty, I should be down twenty decibels. And then it's just, it's just like that from then on. So three hundred, four hundred, I mean, it should be right there, and then. And so on after that. Uh, I mean, I guess it keeps going. So, there's that. Then, now for my phase plot, it looks like this, so it's, it's zero until zero point one P, right? So what's zero, uh, sorry, I should label my breaking point here, so it breaks at four. Um, so now I fear, what's zero point one of P, which is four, well, that's zero point four, right? So, at zero point four, zero point two, three, four, that's right there, so zero point four. Um, we're zero until then. Um, so there, it's like. That is good. Um, and then, after that, we have our breaking point, we go down forty-five decibels a decade for two decades. Right? So I go to, I go to, um, uh, I'm gonna go, end up at four hundred. Uh, sorry, no, not four hundred, four, forty, I'm gonna have forty, so twenty, thirty, forty, so there's our, there is our forty. And I'm gonna be down ninety decibels, right, forty-five, ninety.
I think you mean degrees, right?
I do mean degrees, yeah, I do mean degrees. So, I'm gonna be going down, so yeah, for the phase plot, it's all degrees, I know, I say it wrong. I don't do it on purpose, but I just say. Um, and then, there we go, so negative ninety degrees, and, uh, is that right? So ten times four is that, we're negative, yep, all good, and then from then on, it's zero. Okay. There is our, so there's all our plots, there's all our body plots. Now we gotta combine all of them, right? So to do that, we gotta break it up into segments. And so the way you do this is essentially, you just look at where the turning points are, right? So the first turning point or breaking point, just focusing on the magnitude plots, is at zero point three, right? So everything will be the same for all of them, I'll call the yellow section up until zero point three. Right? So they all have a yellow section up until zero point three. Because the first turning point is at zero point three, breaking point, whatever. Okay, then from then on, from zero point three to four, there's no more breaking points, so, uh, zero point three to four is another segment. On all of the plots, right? Two, three, four. Two, three, four. There we go, and then from then on, we have no more breaking points, right? So it's just another section, so for our magnitude plot, right? It is just three sections. Okay. So I will plot that here as well, right? So till zero point three, it was there, then I have this until four. Right? And then I have from this on. Now. All we do now is we add all the slopes together and account for the constant gain, right? So the slopes, first of all, are gonna be, in the yellow section, just focus on the yellow section, is twenty. That's it, just twenty, right? And we know. That, um, um. Twenty, yeah, just twenty from the constant gain, but we know it's not gonna be exactly like this plot. Because we're going, essentially, this is just a vertical shift of one, of five point forty-six, right? So what it's gonna be is that, um. Just see for a second here, at zero. Okay, so essentially, what you gotta do is notice here that, okay, just focus on the, the first and second graph. Because the third and fourth graphs are just fully zero until zero point three, right, fully zero. So all that matters is the slope and the constant gain here. If the constant gain wasn't there, pretend like the constant gain wasn't there for a second. Then it would look like this, and let me show you why it would look like this, so it would look like we have a zero there. And then we have our constant gain going through that, not constant gain, sorry, our, our. Zero at origin, right? Going through here, so the second plot, zero at origin. Going through there, and has negative twenty, or, or twenty decibels per decade, so it would look like this, right? That's what it would look like. Okay, but, so it's not exactly gonna be this for two reasons, there's two things that are getting in the way here, right? Whoa. Okay, so there's two things that are the issue. Um, one is that I have to account for the constant gain, right? So I have to bring this up, it's not gonna go through zero, it's gonna go up by five point forty-six. So I just gotta pick this up, move it so that the, the, the right edge lands at approximately five point forty-six. Right, right edge lands at approximately five point forty-six, so I'll leave it there, I guess, right? Okay, so these points are off. And also, the graph doesn't extend past this first breaking point. So there is where this line should end. Right? And that is our first. That is the first section of the final magnitude body plot. I drew the simple pole, simple. Been calling the wrong thing, sorry. The zero at origin, okay? I then applied the constant gain, bring it up, and then I cut it off at the, at the point there. We don't have to think about the constant gain anymore. As long as I keep drawing from that point onwards, right? Connecting it to the last part of the graph, the constant gain is accounted for. So we can completely forget about the constant gain. Okay? Um, all we have to deal with is the, the last three graphs, right? Okay, so then the next blue section, any questions? The blue section, add up the slopes, so again, forget about the cost scheme. We've accounted for it because we brought this first line up by the constant gain, and now as long as we connect the dots, it's okay. Twenty decibels, twenty decibels, zero. So, forty decibels in this range, right? So, um, forty decibels per decade. So in one decade, that's from here to here, right? That's from zero point three to three, I should go up by forty decibels, right? So it would be about here, you know, eyeballing it a little bit, so it'd be about there, right? But look, we don't make it to the end, because that's, it's actually at four that the thing ends, so I gotta go another decade here, I gotta go another decade. To bring it up to there, right, approximately there. And I'll show you what I'm gonna do, so I'm gonna connect the dot now, connect the three dots. No, don't mean to switch my keyboard. So connect these three dots like that. But, I have to cut off the graph at the turning point. Okay? So that. Too many buttons in front of me now. That is the graph that's created there. That is the graph that's created, again. I draw the line across, you know, I, I add the slopes, go one decade. I don't make it to the end of the section, the blue section, so I gotta go another decade, connect all the dots. But then cut the line at that turning point, because that's when the slopes change, right? And then from there, I can just, uh, continue, so that's the end. Now the purple section. Okay, so the purple section is, um, again, forget constant gain, twenty decibels, twenty decibels. And oop, I didn't label my slopes, did I? Should've done that, so let's take a look at what, even though we can just see it from the graph, it still is important to note. So that's negative twenty decibels per decade, and then I didn't label my slope here either, did I? No, I did not. So that is, let's see, what is it? It's negative forty-five per decade, uh, negative forty-five degrees per decade, yeah. Um, this should be degrees, this should be, yeah, okay. Okay. So, then, now, we just look at the purple section, negative twenty slope, twenty slope, twenty slope. Well, the negative twenty and the twenty will cancel, so it's just a twenty slope here, right, in this purple section, and that goes forever, right? So from here to here, to our next decade, which is ten over, so from, uh, four to forty, twenty, thirty, forty. I should go up twenty decibels. That looks pretty close to forty, so I should be pretty close to sixty. Right? And I should be pretty close to eighty. And that's fine, I can just cut it off wherever I wanna cut it. And that is our final magnitude plot. May have some extra dotted lines, but the dotted lines. That's the final magnitude plot. Now, our phase plot. Similar stuff, more breaking points. So, um, okay. Uh, phase ninety degrees up. Okay.
Sorry, uh, I got a question though. Uh, just for our last example before the boat plot, what was our last, uh?
Here?
Yeah, what was our final answer? Sign. Okay. Alright.
If you have any questions, let me know.
Yeah, I think it has to do with, uh, my initial conditions, which I thought wrong, probably.
My initial conditions were zero and zero and one volt per second.
Okay, I got zero and four amps per second.
Uh, should be, yeah, it's four volts per second?
Yeah, yeah, four volts per second, I mean.
Okay, well, how about after, we'll, I'll take, after this last question, we'll take a look at what you did. Um, okay. So, for here, we have. A similar thing going on, you know, we just add all the graphs together, but we have a constant gain of this ninety degrees that's always applying here. But first, what I'm gonna do is I'm just going to mark the sections, right? So where are my turning points? At zero point zero three, zero point zero four, three, and forty, so that's gonna be a, a bunch of sections. So the first one is at zero point zero three, so I gotta draw the yellow section is from zero to zero point zero three, zero point zero two, zero point zero three. Zero point zero two, zero point zero three. I, I, do I need to, here, I missed one. Zero point zero two, zero point zero three. Although that first plot doesn't really matter. And then here as well, just draw my origin, just right, oops, right there. So that's at zero point zero two, zero point zero three, okay? Then the next section is going to be from zero point zero three to zero point four. Zero point zero three, two, three, four. Oh, I should draw it on the, I should draw it here, what am I doing? Two, three, four. It's fine. Zero, two, three, four. Two, three, four, okay, there's our blue section. And we have another section, from zero point zero three to three. Right, so from, sorry, from zero point zero four to three. Just right there. Just right, two, three, I'm, I'm, I didn't make a mistake, I didn't make a mistake, but, um. These colors should be on the, on the axis, it should be up there, I don't know why I drew it up there. Um, so zero point zero four to three. Zero point zero four, two, three. And we have another section, from three to forty, right, from three to forty. So from three to forty, from three to twenty, thirty, forty. Twenty, thirty, forty, and finally. Oops. Twenty, thirty, forty. And then our final section is from forty onward, right, from forty onward. So the colors just change wherever you have a turning point, that's why I labeled them while I'm going, right? So now, uh, we just take it section by section. Our first section has all slopes of zero, right? And only a constant gain of ninety from the second plot, the first plot, the first plot contributes literally nothing, right? Literally, completely nothing, so we can just focus on the, the last three, last three plots. And it contributes a constant gain, so once I, uh, once I use the constant gain, I can even forget about that one, I only need to focus on the last two. Right? So the constant gain of ninety and zero otherwise, so that means that we're just coming in, starting at ninety. So it's going to be ninety here, like that. Okay. Now that I've accounted for that ninety degree shift up, I can forget about this, this graph entirely, it contributes no slopes. So as long as I just keep drawing from that point, it's fine, so just focus on these two. Um, the blue section, no slope here, forty-five decibels per decade here, so from this section, we should go forty-five decibels per decade, so. One decade is from here to here, and I should go up by forty-five decibels, which means I should be, um, here. Right? Right? So I'm going to draw a line connecting those two points, like that. Sure, everything's okay here, yeah, everything's good. Uh, so there's our first bit there, now in the pink section, we have, why is there a pink section? Oh, because here it starts going, okay, so it's, oh, I didn't label something, oh, I did label something, there, forty-five deci- negative forty-five. Negative forty-five, okay, yeah, so we have, um, forty-five decibels per, forty-five degrees, I keep saying decibels, don't I? Forty-five degrees per decade, minus forty-five degrees per decade, that is a total slope of zero. So across this entire pink section, I can just go right to the end of the pink section, cuz I, I don't need to do any kind of line connection or anything like that. Right, so I could just go here, across, there we go, nothing else happening. Sent it down a little too far. Green section, um, I have zero slope here, negative forty-five degrees per decade here, fantastic. So I just have negative forty-five degree slope. So that means here, a decade later, I'm gonna be down forty-five degrees, so there's my next point. But look, I don't get to the end of the green section, right? So I gotta go ano- oh, I didn't do that here either, did I? Whoops, okay, let's erase this. Take it back a second, made a small mistake, because look, here, I didn't get to the end of that blue section, right? I didn't get to the end, I should really like to emphasize it more, that is where the section ends. That is where the section ends. That is where the section ends. That is where the section ends, so, I don't actually connect the dot there. I have to go another decade, go up by another forty-five degrees, okay? Connect now. Connect now these lines, these dots, I mean. Right, so from here to here, but now cut it off at this point right there. Right? And so I get this line like that, very slight difference, but it is a difference. Okay. Now, for until the end of this purple section, I have zero. Slope. Zero slope, and then, um, now I'm gonna be. Um, uh, doing what I said before, right? So no slope here, negative forty-five decibels, degrees per decade here. So in a decade, I should go down forty-five, so I should go to about here. But we're still not at the end of this section, right? So I gotta go to another decade to about here. Go down another forty-five to get around there, and so I'll get my, um, things like this. Um, but I gotta cut it off at that turning point, so I gotta cut off right there, and erase all the other points, and now connect these two dots. Okay, great. From now on, zero slope, zero slope, it's just a horizontal line. So once again. There is our body plot. And that's, that's the exam, that is the midterm. We did every bit of it there, how long did that take? Um, oh, just made it, at an, an hour and twenty-nine minutes. So, uh, yeah. It's a little bit. Yeah, it's a little bit tight on time, an hour and twenty-nine minutes, and. Yeah, it's a little bit tight on time, an hour and twenty-nine minutes, and an hour and a half. So that's as much time as Wiggle Room we had there, which is not, not very much. Um, but anyways, okay, so any questions about all this stuff, I know Hashem be added question, um, but. Any other people about bony plots? Alright, sounds like we're good then. So. Hashem, do you wanna ask your question now, talk about this?
Yeah, yeah, so, um, going over my work, I got the complex, um, solution. So I, I was, I got the, what was it, negative one-half plus minus one-half I? So I believe that's what you got as well, yeah, so then, you know, I made my uh, particular solution. But now it just came to the initial conditions that I didn't quite get, so I knew that.
You got the first one, you got the first initial condition, zero, right?
Uh, yeah, but not the way that I think I should, so I think I just got lucky there. So like, for example, at T equal to zero minus, uh, what I knew that, I just knew that it was just a simple sort of circuit. With just a voltage source and a two ohm resistor. So I knew that I could find current like that, right, the current going through the inductor. Uh, so I knew that would just be eight volts divided by two ohms, which was four amps, so there'd be four amps traveling down.
Four amps traveling down like that.
Yes, and I also knew that the voltage drop off must have been uh, eight volts as well. Alright, actually, that's not true.
Across the re- resistor, yes.
Like, yeah, not.
Not our V, not our V, our V is the voltage here, which is zero, because that's the same node, that node and this node.
Yeah, exactly, so there would be no drop off if there's no impedance in the first place.
Yeah, or if there's just like, if, if you're just looking at the, like, if you're just looking at a wire, and you're measuring the voltage difference there. It'll be zero, because the wire has no resistance, ideally.
Okay, so yeah, so I, so that's right, so we got the four amps going down, so automatically, because we know that there's zero volts. Going down that, uh, supposed, uh, what's it called, inductor. Uh, V, V zero would just be equal to zero, so that's how we got the zero.
Uh, yeah.
Because this was just the wire, okay, so that, that, that initial condition is good. Um, but it was just the second condition, so if we go to T equal to zero plus.
By the way, I also solved, yeah, you, you said that, you solved for this current is four amps, right, this current.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, exactly, so right over here, we know that there's four amps going downwards. And what, right now, what we're trying to find is D V over T, so that means if we find the, the current going down the capacitor. We could just divide it by the capacitance, and then that gives us. Uh, D V over D T, so, we knew that it was zero amps, right, because it was all going through the inductor.
Uh, we don't know that it's zero amps, we don't know it's zero amps.
But didn't we know, because if you look at T equal to zero minus, you see how there was four amps going down the inductor? So that means, uh, there was no current going through the capacitor.
But the current can instantaneously change on a capacitor.
Oh.
The voltage can't instantaneously change.
The voltage can't.
Can instantly, instantaneously change on a capacitor.
So then that's where you would, so you would have to do some sort of like K C L?
Yeah, so I did, I did K C L, yeah, on the purple node there, I got, uh, zero minus eight, zero. Cause I know this voltage is zero, right, I know this voltage is zero, so, and, and, and sorry, and I also know this is the ground node, so I know that has a voltage of zero up here, so. Zero minus eight over two, zero minus two over two, and then this is.
Oh, so it's almost, so it's almost like you're doing a nodal at that point.
It is, yeah, nodal is just doing K C L but in an organized way, right, so.
But couldn't you also do a, a K V L around the loop, or is that just doesn't help?
Um, we don't know enough about the currents to do that, right? We don't know enough about the currents to do that, so we know about the voltages though, right, because of these voltage sources. It's a little bit confusing, because like K C L is talking about the currents, but you make an equation about the voltages, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Usually, so these are all voltages we're talking about here, right, here I know the current, here I'm looking for the current, but these are voltages I'm dealing with. And then same with K V L, K V L, I'm using the voltages to make something about the currents. But we don't know anything about the currents here, so we only know, we know that, but we, we know more about the voltages of these guys.
I see, so we know that there's zero volts at that, at that node that you highlighted in purple.
Yes, because we know that the, the initial voltage across the capacitor is zero.
Exactly, cause the voltage crosses over, over time.
Yes, it does, yep.
Yeah, oh, okay. Yeah, I think.
But the current does through the inductor, that's why we know this is four amps here.
Okay, yeah, I just, cause usually when, um, like, the, the questions that I practiced with this, it was, we're usually, we're doing I of T, not V of T. So that's why I initially, I was like, oh, okay, I gotta just find, um, I at zero, and then uh, D I over D T. You know, so that was my mistake, I kinda didn't realize that it was finding voltage this time, okay. But yeah, thank you.
No problem, no problem, yeah.
In general, you never wanna end up with more than one differential equation. If you're, if you do any, whatever method, if it's not giving you just one, that's probably not the method they want you to use.
Sorry, just one of what?
Differential equation, like, you shouldn't have to solve another differential equation to find, like, another va- value there, right?
Hmm, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, I'm here for any more questions, but that's all the questions I wanted to cover, just do one of the midterm practices all through, and then. Took, took, took a good amount of time, so yeah, so I'm here, but other than that, I'm done for today.
I just have a general question.
Yeah.
If we're able to do like all the past midterm, we should be good, right?
I think so, I would say that is good practice, considering that they're very similar to what we are gonna be asked tomorrow, uh, not tomorrow.
Did you ever say how many questions are on the?
Yeah, three, one AC op amp, one second order circuit, one.
Oh, only three?
Exactly like we just did right here, exactly like we just did.
They must be multi-part, cause he said you have to do four body plots, or I think it's two, like, it's two pairs, but I.
Yeah, so probably, probably something like this, like how you have to, see how here I made one, two, three, four, five pairs, right, so probably something like that. And then, and then it's multiple parts, this, this, the second order circuit question is presented in multiple parts. Presented as like, find the differential equation, find the initial values, find the.
For op amp questions, right, let's, uh, they're, they're gonna give us like an AC op amp question, like, most likely. So, like, which way would you prefer, like, would you prefer like the second order differential equation type method? Or, um, AC or phaser analysis?
For the AC op amp, it's definitely easier to do the, to do the AC, like, the phaser stuff, you can totally do it, um, in time domain. And I actually kind of think it's, I think it's kind of cool that you can do it in time domain, I mean, of course you can, cause it's the same thing, but. Uh, definitely easier to do in phaser domain, because you can do this whole impedance thing. Essentially, to solve the AC op amp question, you just have to set these voltages are the same, these currents are zero, and from there you can do everything. That is what lets you solve everything.
I believe, I don't know, were you, uh, if you have, I have Andy Y.
I do, I have, I have.
Yeah, he's like, we expect you to do it in AC.
He said that, yeah, okay, then there you go.
I mean, you, he said, if you like, I'm not gonna stop you, but we expect you to do it in AC.
There you go, so then we do it in AC, I would do it in AC anyways. Okay, well, if there's any more questions, let me know, other than that, have a good night, guys, good luck with everything, good luck with your, uh.
And Adam also, could you try to upload this, like, uh, soon?
I'll do it right away, I'll do it right away, I know I'm bad at that, but I will.